Where are those breakers?
It is seven o'clock. I'd like to open the meeting of the Foxborough School Committee. The agenda this evening starts with visitors, approval of minutes, re-showing of the Did You Know video, a wellness update from Dr. Allardyce, recognition of school nurses, followed by a discussion of AP and SAT scores, a discussion of school committee and superintendent goals, other matters, and then adjournments. So, are there any visitors this evening? Having none, I'll move to approval of the minutes. Any corrections to the September 10th minutes?
On page three, there is one extra word on the very bottom of the page. The first "from" should be deleted.
Okay. Any other comments on the September 10th minutes?
Shouldn't that sentence read, "Miss Lloyd stated that," or that sentence doesn't flow correctly right? Is that the one you were referring to, that Miss Lloyd stated the school committee "from received a thank you note?"
We're taking out the "from."
It's still not grammatically correct.
Yeah, it works.
Any other corrections? Bearing none, all those in favor of the minutes say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now we have the September 17th minutes.
Did we make a motion?
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Motion approved by Martha, seconded by Kate. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The September 17th minutes. Comments, questions, corrections?
On the back page, under attachments, I've already called Wendy and let her know that my favorite color of roses is yellow, because I thought roses and responsibilities for school committee was a wonderful title. But I think she has changed it to "rules."
"Rules." "Roles and responsibilities."
I mean, "roles," roses. I told her my favorite color is yellow.
Any other corrections? Do I have a motion to approve the September 17th? Motion by Katie, seconded by Martha. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is the Did You Know video. And we showed this early in the year to help educate all of us in Foxborough how quickly the world is changing and how education needs to change in order to prepare the students of today for the world of tomorrow. And we showed that during the summer. It has been shown a couple of times by Chris to his staff. I think the entire staff has actually seen it. Beverly asked that we rebroadcast it tonight so those that may be away on vacation have a chance to see it. It is also, is it out on the school website?
I think it's linked.
No, we've got some bandwidth issues.
Okay. It's on the EVO website if people want to see it from there. They put it out there. Paul, do you want to put the video on?
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak about this again, because I think it's, I was thinking as I was watching this, that one of the innovations maybe we should have is two-way communication with anyone who has been viewing this, because when we showed it to the administrators group when we had our retreat in August, there were oohs and ahs that we were hearing. And then when the school committee and all of us were together in the auditorium here, there were many oohs and ahs. And I think that if people were watching at home, I'm sensing that we'd be hearing the same kind of thing. I didn't know that. What does that mean? And really, that's what we're embarking on now. What does it mean for us? What does it mean for our students? What does it mean for the educational process that they go through here in Foxborough? And how does it transmit to the next level? I said to a group the other day that I'm thinking of us now as a prep school, a school system, because we can't stop here. That's clear in that video, that we can't stop here. A high school diploma is good, but it's not going to be enough anymore. And I think the more we can educate the public just to that fact, and the data is crystal clear about ability to earn and to earn a living that will allow you to enjoy living in this community and in this state and in this country, we really need to work on this during the year and during the next few years, because it's not something that we're going to, for instance, settle tonight when we finish our goals. But we do have, as I know the committee knows, and when we discuss it later in the agenda, we do have educational innovation as one of the areas that we really want to focus on this year. So, I think periodically raising this or also searching on the internet for other similar types of video, similar types of facts, I think is going to be helpful, because it does crystallize it for me. I think it really gives me a sense of, this is the challenge ahead, and I think we're poised with all that we're going to be able to do in this system, we're poised to meet that challenge. I feel very confident about that.
And one of the things that we discussed at our workshop was the need to engage parents. And you'll see as we discuss goals tonight, being able to help parents understand how important these changes are and how that will impact their own children, and how we, by engaging the parents, can help them extend the school day. The school day can be extended not because we have teachers work longer, but because parents are working more with their students at home and helping them recognize what they need to do in order to achieve more, in order to be successful afterwards. So, part of that goal we'll be talking about is how do we engage the community into the need for pushing our students so that they can excel beyond high school, beyond college, and beyond life. So, Martha?
No, I've been in a practice where I see a lot of young women, from the time they were born, grow, come up through the ranks, and I see them now as patients. And it's been a real, I opened it this past summer, when some of the graduates from college that I've been taking care of are coming in and telling me that they're not, you know, what are you going to do at this point? I'm going back to school. They are telling me that to get a BS is not enough, that they realize in order for them to succeed, that they have to have a master's. They're not going to take a break. They're not going to take any time off. They're going to jump right back in there and go after this. So, I think the students today are, you know, we were at a point, I remember when we graduated, we were like, oh, we couldn't wait to get married, to go out and start a family, to get a job, and make our way in the world. And it was always, the master's was on the back burner. And these kids know right now that it's not enough in order to do what they want and to be able to succeed in this world. So, I think we are getting across them. So, it's important.
Larry, I'd just like to make a comment, too. I was at a meeting this past week, as was Dr. Mars and Jeff Dieter, was at the Foxborough High School where they had a meeting for high school parents. And one of the topics that came up was exactly this. And I think, from my experience, what you're going to find is that there are a lot of parents that want this kind of information. And I think from this meeting that from last week, it's clear that parents are asking for that. They want to know about their children's options in middle school. I know we discussed this at our meeting last, two weeks ago, or last week, when was it? Our goals and objectives meeting, and I know we're going to talk more about that. But I think it speaks to that, there is a large group of parents out there that feel this way and want us to be able to provide the information to them, so.
Well, I think one way that the Foxborough School Committee has helped address some of this is we have been encouraging for several years to add more advanced placement courses, which, right. And with a high grade, you get credit at college for that. And with the expense of college, and now parents having to project perhaps master's degree, which, and some of them you can't get in just one year, it has to be a two-year master degree program. They could shorten the length of time to three and a half or perhaps three years for an undergraduate degree, which greatly helps parents. But the students signing up for these advanced placement degrees need to know that it's a major commitment. Major commitment.
Kate, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, good. We'll move on. I know that Dr. Allardyce has a thing to go to this evening, so I hope you don't mind being put on early so you can get to your function early as well. Now, Dr. Allardyce is going to give us an update on the Wellness Committee. And for those in the audience, there is material out there, that summary memo that was shared with the committee that is available to you as well.
I'm packing my luggage. I did bring some samples of the text, so I'll pass this around as we're talking. Good evening. Basically, what I'm here to do is to present you with an update, a brief update and overview of the status of the Health Wellness Curriculum Review. As summarized in the memo, I'm going to just speak to some of the key points. The Health Wellness Committee began meeting in the late spring and worked together throughout the summer. As part of the committee, we had membership from all the different educational levels. At the elementary, we had two of our wellness teachers, Susan Barrows and Betsy O'Coin, who served on the committee. At the middle school level, it was Tara Dunn, Matt Noon, and Steve Cicati, and then Kevin Murphy from the high school. I guess I want to start by expressing my thanks to them. They put an enormous amount of time and energy in throughout the process, a lot more hours than is probably, we give them credit for, because a lot of work done on the side and at home and in meetings. So, thank you to all the members of the committee for the work that they've done. Let me just sort of outline what we did as a committee and how we move forward with the recommendations that we're bringing you today. As we started, one of our first tasks was really to look at and analyze the status of the current curriculum that we had in place. We looked at alignment with the state frameworks. We looked at the quality and caliber of the instructional resources and tools that we had. And we also looked at sort of the integrity of the program and how it built vertically over students' educational careers. As we were going through that process, the committee really determined that there was some significant variation in the instructional program from building to building and from classroom to classroom. All of our teachers were teaching to the state frameworks and to the state standards. However, the tools and resources were pulled from a variety of different sources. So, we felt that in looking at that, that when you were looking at a child's experience over the grade levels, that it wasn't as consistent and cohesive as we'd like our program to be. So, unlike some of the other curriculum reviews, we started by rewriting and revising the entire Health Wellness Program and curriculum from K to 10, students from 1 to 10, I should say. As part of that, and at this point, we have a draft, working draft document. I think it's very well developed. We have, the state frameworks and the standards were published in 1999, and the health, unlike some of the others, defined learning standards in grade level bands. So, under the growth and development category, there were standards that students were expected to master by the end of grade five. And then the next band was by the end of grade eight, and then by the end of grade 12. So, one of the first things our committee did was to take a look at those standards and break them down into specific grade level goals and expectations, so that we defined what students would be accountable for in just grade one. What were the core skills? What was the core knowledge? What was the vocabulary that they should possess at the end of that? And then we did that through all the standards, so that we had not just grade level bands, but specific learning standards for each grade level. We also started to map in beyond the core knowledge and the skills and the vocabulary, what were some of the instructional tools and resources that we had available to present different concepts to students. As we went through that process, again, there's a variety of different programs and tools that we have available. Many of you have probably heard, the high school uses a Science of Suicide program in the seventh and eighth grade. We have an Alliance Quest program on substance abuse that we use. So, we have different materials and tools pulled from different vendors that have good programs and good messages for students. However, the whole curriculum wasn't as cohesive. So, what we are recommending is that we felt we needed to look at a new core program that would have more consistency and would have some fundamental themes and approaches that built from the first grade on. So, in terms of what we're recommending, we did go through a process where we contacted other curriculum specialists, and we spoke to other school systems within the Hockmack League to find out what other schools were using. In that process, it was clear, the market is not saturated. If anyone wants to make a lot of money, there's not a lot of great health programs out there. But there are a few that stand out. The primary, the most popularly used program at the elementary level is called The Great Body Shop. I did bring a sample of that curriculum that I can pass around. There are several other local schools using The Great Body Shop. It's also a program that I used in a past school district in Foxford. It's formatted in a way that's very user-friendly for parents, for teachers, and for students. Has a lot of instructional appeal and is well-aligned and tightly aligned with the national health frameworks, as well as the Massachusetts State Standards. At the middle school level, the most popularly used text that we found is the Glencoe Teen Health. It's also being used at many schools in the Hockmack League. That program has three levels. It's Teen Health 1, 2, and 3, that would align with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade curriculum. So, those are also some examples we can pass around. Thank you. What we're recommending at this time, the review is not complete. What we're recommending is that we pilot these programs in both the, at the, both the elementary level and the middle school level, in classrooms at each of the different grade levels. We'd like to use this as an opportunity for us to evaluate how well these programs meet our district needs. The goal is to implement the programs at the elementary in a first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade classroom, and at one classroom at each of the middle school levels. Between now and February, we'd like to collect some data to see how, we'll look at student achievement, we'll look at how students respond to the new materials, we'll also have at some point an opportunity to get feedback from parents and from teachers as well. At that point in February, we'd like to come to you with a recommendation for which direction we think we'd like to go, whether we'd like to recommend adopting these programs, or whether we need to pursue and look at other options at that point. The cost of piloting the programs is minimal. For the Glencoe, there is actually no cost to pilot. The Glencoe representative will be coming tomorrow to provide a training for all of our middle school wellness staff. One of the things that I think you'll notice as you're looking at this text, and it was a topic that was hit earlier today, both of the programs that we're looking at have very strong parent homeschool components. They also both have very rich online opportunities. There is, for The Great Body Shop, there is a, students get a username and login. Once students are issued that name and code, parents have access to a parent resource website so that they can find out what their students are studying. But in addition to that, there's links to all kinds of other high-quality, high-caliber health websites. The Glencoe also has an online component. Students are also able to take online assessments, and also will have access to a Glencoe site, which would give them links to get further richer information about different topics they're studying. One thing I wanted to mention, the reason that we've chosen two different programs, the elementary program is designed, the elementary health courses take place during the students' physical education periods. So, they have several wellness classes each cycle, two wellness classes each cycle. And what we've decided as a system is that the, one out of every four wellness classes will be designated to health. We were looking for material that would present a lot of content in a short amount of time and in a way that would appeal and catch students' attention. Great Body Shop is structured as a newsletter. Students get 10 individual newsletters throughout the year that are aligned with the health topics that the teachers are covering. So, it's a very appealing sort of format for students to learn. Again, with each newsletter, there's a parent connection. The newsletter goes home, so families can see what was presented in the classroom. It's also a great opportunity for us to work on that nonfiction literacy that we've been talking about, helping kids read texts that in different formats. I have a sample of a student newsletter, if you'd like to take a look at it. The Great Body Shop does offer a program at the middle school level, but as a committee, we felt that when kids hit the upper grade levels, they need greater depth of content than a newsletter would provide. And that's why we're recommending shifting from The Great Body to a text in the middle school. One thing that I can say the two programs offer that's very cohesive is they both come from the perspective of really building healthy life habits and life skills in children. So, there's a large component of instruction dedicated to nutrition. There's also a large part of the program that's built to help children develop positive self-esteem, self-advocacy skills, good peer mediation skills, responding to peer pressure, avoiding dangerous situations. Those are strong themes in the elementary level. At the middle school level, the program, you know, goes a little bit further. In substance abuse, there's a lot of information about how alcohol and different drugs affect your body, how, from a physiological standpoint. So, the content is much richer in the middle school level, but the themes and the presentation are very closely aligned. So, I think the two programs dovetail very nicely. I was going to send this around, too. I'm sorry. That's a sample of the newsletter. What we'd like to do again is go ahead and pilot these two programs at both the middle school and the elementary, to collect some further data so we can make sure that they're going to be the best fit for Foxborough, and come to you with a recommendation at that time as to how we want to move forward from there. That will allow us to complete the writing and publication of the curriculum, once we have finalized all the resources and tools we'll have available. I did bring for you tonight, just for budget purposes, a draft of the potential cost of these programs, so that you would know if the district does recommend and does adopt a new core program, what the cost implications would be. I just want to mention, because The Great Body Shop is a newsletter format, that cost is going to be an annual cost. It's a subscription. So, on the projected cost, you'll see there's a one-time cost of the teacher's manuals and guide, but there is an annual student subscription expense that runs about, basically about $6,000. It's about $1,500 for each of the schools, including the Ahern. So, that's an annual cost. The Teen Health program that we're looking at, that's not an annual, that's a one-time cost. What we're recommending to be fiscally conservative, but also be proactive in our programming, is purchasing classroom sets. We do not envision students taking the text home and back and forth to school. There is such a strong online component. There are Black Line masters and materials that people can copy and print and send home. So, we're recommending purchasing two class sets of each of the levels, for grade six, seven, and eight, as well as teacher's editions and online materials. The total cost for that is $7,497. Okay? But that, again, would be a one-time expense. Unfortunately, I just received a quote from Glencoe about an hour ago, so I couldn't put it out for you before. And I need to look over the numbers a little further, but that's just an estimate for budgetary placeholder. The final recommendation of the committee, and this is something, again, that we're going to continue to look going to continue to look at and examine. As I mentioned earlier, the health wellness standards go in grade level bands, and there are standards that reach into the high school years. At this time, our high school wellness program is really a physical fitness program. The health standards are not, health is not a part of the core program at the high school level. Many districts have that. Phys Ed does become an elective course after 10th grade. Many districts choose to pull the high school standards down, and to make sure they're addressed by grade eight. We don't feel this is the best route for our system, and would like to recommend that we incorporate the health program and health curriculum at the grade nine and grade 10 levels, where students are required to take health wellness. There's many different models, many different ways that we could go about doing that. We do have to look at space issues, because you would need a classroom space for the health classes to meet. We do have to look at staffing and some other members there, and are working with the high school administration to take a look at what the possibilities are there for that. That would be something we'd recommend looking at for September '08, for just the ninth grade, and the following year possibly rolling out into nine and 10. Okay. So, that's the status. I know some committee members had questions about whether all the new programs are consistent with the new wellness policy. I have looked over the most recent draft of that policy, and everything aligns very nicely. The one addition will be, if the new policy is adopted, there'll be an ongoing wellness committee formed, to oversee, you know, future experiment, future programming and nutrition guidelines.
Well, it is obvious that you folks have done a lot of hard work, and once again, you've been able to highlight where the current curriculum is not meeting our needs. And whether it's inconsistency across classrooms, or lack of textbook or core programs, or the inconsistency between grades, I think is fantastic. And in looking at the material you've sent us, you know from sitting with us for the last year, that drug and alcohol abuse is a pretty important issue, and that seems to be covered pretty heavily in there, along with nutrition, and obesity, and violence and things. So, all the topics we've talked about as a committee, seem to be covered in this program. And I commend you and the team for doing marvelous work. And I like your recommendation. Comments from the committee?
Yeah, a lot of work has gone into, obviously, separating all these bands, and making grades specific, and I think it's great. I echo what you said.
Kate, Beverly, any comments?
Excellent for the younger students. And thank you, yes, one-time expense, annual expense, this makes it very, very clear, as we think ahead and project budget. A lot of work.
Significantly less than most of our other curriculum reviews, I hope, and that's a good selling point.
But the way you've taken the time to flag one-time expense, annual expense.
Okay, I'm glad to hear.
Thank you.
Ingrid, I did have one question, though, about the budget. When you and I met and discussed this, you had said that, and I don't know if this is still accurate, that there might be an incentive for us to purchase books prior to the end of the school year.
That's what this proposal looks at. I'm sorry, I should say that. This is a proposal that she put together. If we purchased, it'll be valid through this year. We'll have to get a new proposal if we don't purchase out of this fiscal year. There could be a cost incentive. As you notice, when you look over it, a lot of the materials are coming complimentary in this proposal. It's because it's, the cost could go up if we wait a year.
And that shouldn't be an issue, even if it's not within the current budget structure. We have the revolving accounts, that we could take advantage of a program like this, if we can save some money.
Especially for the one-time expenses.
Right, yeah. Kate?
And I hear you, Dr. Lohrde, mentioned that, for the pilot, you're picking one class in each of those grades?
One teacher to pilot. Now, Bessio, I believe, they'll use it with multiple classes.
Okay.
Yes, they'll use it with multiple classes. They'll also share resources and ideas with other teachers that aren't involved in the pilot. Again, we do have other materials and instructional tools we're using for these core content areas. So, we want to evaluate the effectiveness of one program over another. But they will be sharing, they're all going through the training, all the teachers will have copies of the resources. Teacher that's piloting at grade one will be responsible for evaluating the grade one program, and will probably use it with multiple first grade classes.
So, you'll begin immediately, then, in terms of the pilot?
Yes, Glencoe's coming.
Or do you approve, I guess this is considered in part a textbook adoption, even though it's a pilot, or?
Not at this point.
No, no.
But you could do that relatively quickly?
Yeah, Glencoe's coming tomorrow, and we'll do a comprehensive training for the middle school on the teen health program. We already have the textbooks for the pilot, because they're free, they're complimentary. So, we have all the resources and materials. Immediately after the training, they can move forward with piloting. We're looking at the pilot as a data collection opportunity. Where the committee will need to vote is when we come forward with a recommendation for adoption. This program, our professional development day on October 5th, all the teachers will go through the training for The Great Body Shop as well. They already have all those resources, and they're ready to go once the training's complete.
Excellent.
Chris, did you want to add anything?
I do. One, I want to publicly thank Ingrid for leading this effort. It was something that obviously took time, it started, as she said, late in the spring, and worked through the summer. I had an opportunity to sit in part of one of the meetings, and I know the team was really working diligently. They did survey a number of communities, and these seemed to be the best resources that we can find. So, I look forward to hearing more about the pilot. We'll talk more in February, but we'll offer some ongoing assessments as we move along. Not just because the nurses are here, but certainly our health experts need to be brought into the loop, as we're doing at piloting as well, because they have a lot to bring to the table in this effort, too. I think that, as Larry said, a lot of areas here that are important, and when we think about 21st century skills, this is huge in that regard. It really is. Having people understand the whole wellness piece, and staying healthy, and all of that is a large component to the whole, educating the whole child. So, I think that's an area where we're in a good spot now. I wouldn't have said that three months ago, but we're in a good spot right now.
We're in a good spot. I think bringing the guidance staffing in as well, as we get involved in the pilot, to help us get another lens on the caliber of the programs.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, and have fun at your function this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ingrid.
All right. Appreciate you wanting to introduce the next topic.
I do. This is, I think, the beginning of an effort that I really believe in, in school systems, and that is to talk about programs and people that make a difference. And this group, our first group tonight, and we hope that for future meetings, we're able to have other groups of departments with us, so that we can acknowledge, we can learn more, and we can make sure that the public is aware of all of the vital functions that take place in a school system, that all really need to work together for us to do as well as we do. So, I'm very pleased that we've decided that the first group is our school nurses. It's a wonderful group, I've gotten the chance to get to know them a little bit in the last couple of months, and they do terrific work. Sharon Kelly, who's our nurse leader, is here tonight, and is maybe one of the most technologically savvy nurse leaders I've had a chance to work with. So, Sharon, if you'd like to come up, and I want to thank all of you, I'm sure you're going to introduce, so I won't do that. But thank you for coming tonight and making this presentation.
Well, thank you very much for asking us to come. We don't often get to talk about what we do as nurses, except amongst ourselves. So, first of all, I really would like to introduce all the nurses, they're all here tonight. First of all, at the Ahearn School full-time is Judy Sheehan. And Judy has been at the Ahearn School for the last 16 years. She has her master's degree in nursing. She is a CPR and a first aid instructor, she's DOE certified, and we're very glad to have her for the last 16 years. Next is Linda Mealy. Linda has her bachelor's degree in nursing, she's also a CPR and first aid instructor, she is DOE certified, and she has been at the Borough School for the last 12 years. And then we have Edna Fuller. Edna's been at the Taylor School for six and a half years. Edna has her bachelor's degree in nursing, she's DOE certified, and she is also nationally certified by the National Association of School Nurses. She's actually the only nurse in the district that is. Then we have Karen Larissy. Karen Larissy's at the Igoe School, this is her third year there, and she is DOE certified, she has her bachelor's degree in nursing. And last but not least is Darlene Menz, she's part-time at the Ahearn School, she has her master's degree, she's working on her DOE certification, and this is her second year there.
And I'm Sharon Kelly. This is my 18th year at the high school. My sixth year as nurse leader. I have my bachelor's degree in nursing, my master's is in education, and I'm a CPR and a first aid instructor as well. And I have my DOE certification.
DOE certified.
So, that's who we are, and so let me tell you a little bit about what we do. That's one of our retired school nurses, and we've come a long way from that. We've come a long way from just applying Band-Aids. And today's school nurse deals with increasing numbers of students with chronic illnesses, mental health issues, childhood obesity. Last year, the Department of Public Health had us report our figures for BMI, for grades one, four, seven, and 10. And unfortunately, but to state standards as well, 33% of our students were considered in the at-risk or overweight category. And life-threatening allergies definitely on the increase. But we also deal with bullying, body piercing, and substance abuse. The children that we care for don't always look all that happy, but they have diabetes, asthma, cardiac conditions, psychiatric disorders, blood dyscretias, cancer, learning disabilities, seizure disorders, and that's just kind of scratching the surface. These are our numbers from last year. 1,229 students with medical concerns, 11 students with diabetes, 433 with asthma, and those are the only, just the ones we know, 32 students with neurological disorders, and this is the one that always blows me away. 87 of our students have EpiPen orders. That means they have life-threatening allergies, bee stings, food allergies, and what's becoming increasing now is latex allergies. So, what goes on in our health rooms? Well, these are last year's figures. Over 16,000 student visits across the district, over 500 staff visits, yes, we see staff as well as students, 1,600 scheduled procedures, over 4,000 medication administrations. They keep us pretty busy. We probably see anywhere between 50 and 80% of our students at least once in the health So, what are our health room visits like? Well, we do assessments for illness and injury. We very often provide primary care, because with today's hectic schedules, it's often difficult to get in to see physicians. We provide medical advice, especially to the staff, and we do provide care to students who are sick but have no way home, so very often they spend the whole day with us. Some of our scheduled procedures are glucose testing, tube feedings, NEB treatments, blood pressure checks. And of course, communications. We're not an isolated entity in the schools, we're constantly talking to parents, faculty, staff, outside healthcare providers. These are the numbers that are in our computers. We went computerized in our health rooms in 2001, and I have to say, not every single time we talk to someone or send a note home, it gets put in the computer, but that's the numbers that are there. And then, of course, we link kids to healthcare on the outside of the school, helping them attain health insurance, finding a new doctor, or referring them to their own doctors when we can't care for them in the health room, or linking them to mental health providers, which are becoming few and far between, and we have more and more kids who need those services. And in between, we do our mandatory screenings, vision, hearing, postural, heights and weights, physicals, though we don't do physicals, actual physicals in school, but we have to make sure that the kids have them done, and we go over them and take the information from them. And all of the screening information that we get, we put together, and that's how we take care of our students. It all kind of works together, and you get one big picture. And some of the other things that we do, we make referrals, a lot of times based on our screenings. We do individual healthcare plans, that's just like the individual educational plans students have. If they have a medical concern, they have a healthcare plan. We maintain their records and track their immunizations, and thank God for computers for that, because when there's only one of you and 900 of them, if we didn't have computers, we wouldn't be able to do it. In conjunction with our school physician and administration, we develop policies. We're always the advocate for the students. We provide health education, both in the classroom and individually, and our favorite thing to do is do head checks for lice. But of all these things, I think the most important thing of these numbers right here. Of the 16,402 visits last year, 15,289 students returned to class, and that's what we're here for, to keep them healthy, keep them in the classroom, keep them learning. So, we wear many hats as school nurses. Recent publication on school nursing described our roles as collaborator, emergency nurse, epidemiologist, health expert, manager, mentor, policymaker, researcher, safety inspector, school entry overseer, surrogate parent, and team member. And all of our nurses are all of those things to our students. And despite the fact that we look so young, all of us together, there's 129 years of nursing, not school nursing, but nursing. We all come from a variety of backgrounds. School nursing is not our first job. We've all had a variety of experiences before we arrived here in Foxborough.
Well, one of the things that I hope we'll be able to do, is to work with the local newspaper to do some articles. So, for instance, I think that the average parent would be amazed to see some of these statistics. I think to realize that one out of three children, their BMI indicates they're at risk, and we've got obesity issues. We've talked about that as a school committee, in trying to build that into our wellness program and our goals and objectives. But when you start to see the things that you folks do, I don't know, from a personal viewpoint, that the community, or maybe even in the past, the school committee, has fully appreciated the work that you folks do every single day. And I would like to see us work with the newspaper to feature a story on our nurses, not so much to feature you as individuals, but feature what you do, and to help the parents of this community understand some of the serious issues that our schools deal with every single day. And I think that as we bring other groups in from the school, as we work to educate the public on the role that these different folks play, then I think they see a better view of our schools. And as you point out, we hear this from teachers, your mentors, your parents, there's so many roles that you play, that the whole group does. We have custodians that do mentoring as well, for students that are troubled. So, it's important for us to make sure that the community fully understands and appreciates. You know, we had cuts in the past in guidance, and cuts in the past in the library, because people, I don't think, fully appreciated what the role some of those folks played. So, we're hoping that we can continue to educate people with what all of our folks do, and it was, from my standpoint, a real pleasure to hear the nurses go first, because you play such an important role, day in and day out, in a very critical situation for us. Martha?
I think what people need to know in the community, it's a little frightening when you said between all of you, it's 129 years, and I've already put in three years of training and 38 years of work, so I've already contributed 41 years to nursing. And I'm not trying to date myself, but I think people in the community really need to understand the most important part of your job, and the fact that you are probably the most highly qualified, highly credentialed nurses that we could have in our midst. And not everybody could do what you do. I couldn't do what you do. Katie's been in nursing, and she couldn't, she's not qualified to do what you do. You know, when you sit here and you say you have your BS, your MS, you're working on your PhDs, whatever, you could make so much more out in the workforce. And I think people need to realize that, that you have a great love for what you're doing, and you share it with our children each and every day, and we should be so grateful for what you do, and how you support our children, and how you protect our children. And I think people need to know that. They need to hear from us, what an important, integral part you are of the system, and we can't survive without you, it's plain and simple. So, I, for one, appreciate what you do, each and every do for our children, because I understand firsthand how qualified you are to do this job. So, I thank you.
Katie, do you want to add anything?
I think Martha said it all.
Okay. Beverly?
Thank you for being here.
Kate?
Great presentation. In fact, perhaps we could get a copy of it?
Yeah, that would be great.
That is just phenomenal. And I just want to say, I think you're a success. You passed. It is very timely, and I think our parents do know how important you are. Remember, when the town was forced to cut $2 million, and a million had to be absorbed by the schools, people thought, oh, the nurses. And you brought a set of statistics forward. People thought, oh, the nurses. And you brought a set of statistics forward at that time, which was incredible, like you have this evening. And I think it was with parents, and we do hear from time to time, we at that time had seven children with diabetes. And the reason that's so important is that the best treatment is an insulin pump. And that means a level of nursing care that just a lot of schools can't provide. And we have a talented staff that does that. So I think our parents are very aware, I think, in terms of public relations. Larry, I think you've got to sign that on somebody, or it'll never get done. But I think maybe to let people know, pick a subject, food allergies or obesity, you might want to delegate that one, because I think it is important to let the community know. I think our parents know, our teachers know. This is still very timely, so we can recognize you. But I think to get the word out in the community, because these numbers are staggering. And it's been three years since we last heard some of these numbers, and obviously, they've increased further. Well done.
Well, two things. First of all, I'd like to ask the school committee to give you a standing ovation for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I know that in talking to Chris, he agrees that we need to get this communication out. Since Beverly worked on the wellness committee, I'd like to ask Beverly if she would work with Chris and our nurses and the newspaper to work together to not only craft an initial story, but a series of stories that I think the newspaper will be interested in publishing, so that parents understand issues around the things that you see every day, whether it be, you know, there could be an article on obesity, and some of the resources that parents could go to. There could be some on the mental health issues or on insurance. There's lots of different topics, and I think that it isn't just using, you know, getting the information to our newspaper, because they've been so supportive whenever we've wanted information. But it's also getting that information on our website. It's getting it to our organizations throughout the schools so that they can distribute them to parents as well. And I think the more that we can look for ways to get that information out electronically, via the newspaper, et cetera, will go a long way in helping educate the community on the issues our students face and how to make their lives a little better, at the same time, understanding another aspect of what the schools do on behalf of the students that maybe people don't always appreciate. So I think that we have a real educational effort, and I would ask Beverly to work with you, Chris, and the nurses to have a number of topics and a number of avenues for distributing that information.
I know that now that Frank Waterman is back at the Foxborough Report, and that he's very interested in stories, and certainly it would be one that I know he would be...
And it's great to have Frank back. Although Mike is a great writer, there's nobody with more passion and energy than Frank, and Frank has always been a friend to the schools. And I know he's not here this evening, but we welcome him back to the community and the Foxborough Report, and we're delighted to have him back on the beat.
Can I just say two things? One, again, thank you. This was really a terrific presentation. And two, the committee knows this because they've seen the memorandum from the commissioner, but I have the authority to grant you professional status as long as you've been in the system for three years and you are certified. So we will send a letter to all of you who are, and congratulations for that, and others who are not. And I think, Downing, you're working on certification. Was there anyone else that's...
No.
I think I'm the newbie.
He's the newbie.
You'll be 12 or 18 years before you know it. Don't worry.
I'm so old, I remember when Downing was a student.
Some of us also remember former students.
Bonjour, chiseur.
That makes me feel better, actually. So anyway, professional status, I was thrilled to see that memo from the commissioner, and I know that we did reform and certification and recertification and all of that, where, you know, would bring you into the fold, which I think is really terrific, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Next item, Chris?
Each year, we have an opportunity to hear about some successes of our high school students. And this does dovetail nicely with the Did You Know video, because when we start to talk about high achievement, we start to talk about students having opportunities to explore future endeavors, certainly the link to advanced placement and the link to SAT scores and other achievement data. We'll talk a little bit more about other achievement data later in our agenda item after this one. But I'd like to invite our high school principal, Jeff Beaters, to come forward and walk us through some more data about student achievement.
Good evening. I'll start the discussion tonight with just a brief overview of our SAT program, and then I'll proceed to talk a little bit about the AP program. This is, as you know, and just for the public, this is the second year that our students have taken the new SAT program. Prior to that, there was a section in mathematics and sections in English. And what they did is they added a writing component. So this is our second year to measure our students' ability as far as the writing component is concerned. Test time has increased with the new SAT process. The reading sections are longer, and again, as I mentioned, the writing component is new. Nationally, the College Board reports that just under a million and a half students throughout the United States took the test this year. In Massachusetts, almost 61,000 students took the test, representing 85 percent of all students in Massachusetts. You know, I'll compare us to the state averages, and I'll compare us nationally. In both, we've done favorably well. I think probably the state is a more accurate reflection because of the numbers of students to take the test. You can go nationally as high as Maine, it has 100 percent of its students take the test, to as low as, you know, the Dakotas and Mississippi, they have 3 or 4 percent of their students take the AP test, I mean, not the AP, the SAT test. So I think from Massachusetts' standpoint, reporting that 85 percent took the test. Foxborough this past year, 87 percent of our students took the test. So I think it's probably a more favorable comparison, trying to compare kind of oranges to oranges, if you will, or if you like, apples, apples to apples. It's up to you. So 186 percent of our students took the SAT test in 2007. As far as the critical reading was concerned, our students scored an average of 520, and that was up from, up 13 points from 2006, where the student average was 507. Mathematics held constant at 543. It was 543 last year, and this year as well, this past year as well. And then the writing was 521 two years ago, and 529 this past test administration, so it's up eight points. As far as the state is concerned, critical reading, Foxborough scored seven points higher than Massachusetts students. In mathematics, 21 points higher, 543 as opposed to the state average of 522. And then in writing, 18 points higher, 529 as opposed to 511 for the state average. Nationally, just to give you a flavor, our 520 as opposed to 502 is an increase of 18 points. Mathematically, 28 points. The national average was 515. And then writing was 35 points higher. The national average was 494, and our writing was 529. I think what we're seeing nationally is a pretty flat line. If you look at the 10-year trends, it's pretty flat line. Nationally, the critical reading scores dropped one point from last year. The writing scores dropped three points, and the math scores dropped three points. And as far as Massachusetts is concerned, again, pretty flat line. Critical reading scores stayed even. Mathematics dropped two points, and the writing increased one point. So I'm pleased to announce that there's a positive trend here at Foxborough, and so we're excited about that. As far as a five-year trend in critical reading, Foxborough showed an increase over the five years of a 6-point increase. Massachusetts in general was a minus three, excuse me, and nationally was a minus five. So again, I think over time, to judge whether it's statistically significant or not, I think we'll need a few more years, especially under the new format. With writing being only two years, again, Foxborough's increased eight points in the last two years. Massachusetts plus one, and nationally is minus three. So the other piece, I think, that helps us is this year, we have 111 students that were enrolled in our AP mathematics program, and 81 students were enrolled in our SAT English classes. So again, we're emphasizing the importance of the SAT. Again, based on our mission, we're trying to improve our students' communication skills, their abilities to read, their abilities to write. So we're looking at the large picture. But in that large picture, also, we utilize the SAT as an indicator of student improvement. Any questions with the SAT before I move to the AP?
Jeff, one question, and Chris hasn't heard me say this before, everyone else has. When we do a lot of comparison to averages, and we say the average in the state or the average in the country. What I don't like about averages is I don't want us to compare ourselves to Mississippi, as you indicated, or the Dakotas. And so while it's nice to see how we're doing against the state average, what I'd like us to do is to pick 10, 12, 20 communities that we think are similar to Foxborough in terms of economics and class size, student size, et cetera. And let's look specifically at them and how well we're doing against those communities. And then let's pick a couple of communities that we really admire and see, because we want to be shooting to do the westwards. We want to be shooting for the well's leaves. We want to be shooting for those other communities that are far better funded than Foxborough or have different kinds of programs. So rather than just picking a state average, which includes Boston and Brockton and Springfield, I'd really like to see us report, and you guys can figure out which of the communities that you think are most representative, and then let's see on a regular basis how we're stacking up against those communities and what our trend is against theirs as opposed to the whole state.
Perhaps we should use the format Paul Jackson used. Mr. Jackson did that for us, and we had given that to the advisory, and then it was updated for us in the spring. So perhaps we may want to go over and just say, okay, hock-a-bock, and what are those other communities, so we're not asking them to do redundant work. But I think to have that updated again for the budget year, I think that's a very important...
I guess I want to give Chris the leeway of not just taking that list and using it, but if he thinks there are some other comparisons, that he should have the leeway to do it. But we do have the basis of some. But we often talk about general numbers as opposed to the specific. And every time we review SATs or anything else, I'd like us to, or when we start to look at some of the others we've talked about, not the Iowa test, the one we use.
Terranova test.
Terranova. Again, Terranova, we talk constantly averages, and we don't peg ourselves against certain communities. I'd like us to do that.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
I had a question, Larry, about, did you mention the number of students that are taking the SAT review course? Is that what you just...
Yes, yes.
What were those numbers again?
I believe it was 111 in mathematics and 80, what did I say? 111 in math and 81 in English.
And has that changed from last year?
It has. I don't remember the exact number. Math has gone up probably 15 or 20, but English has gone up significantly. I think we had like 25 or 30 students in there, so we've gone up to about 50, 50 more.
That's very significant.
Yeah. And so I think our scores will continue to move in a positive direction. I think our program is unique. And then I know a lot of schools offer the SAT program at night, not during the school day, so that the population won't be as large. I think it also is going to beg a question down the road, as we look at MCAS remediation pieces, SAT pieces, and our elective programs that are getting filled, how we want to potentially attack that issue as well, which, you know, potentially is a funding issue.
But it sounds like there's a demand now for those courses, because there are more students enrolled in the SAT review.
I think we just tried to emphasize the importance of, you know, doing the best students can. I think that'll be reflective in the AP piece as well. You know, we constantly tell our kids we want them to be prepared. We want them to challenge themselves towards academic excellence, and I think this is just one of those indicators that hopefully our students are buying into.
I'd like to ask, Jeff, could you give me, repeat the national numbers, because I would like to have those again.
Sure, you know what I'll do?
I didn't know the national on it, so I didn't have a frame of reference to say, are we flatlined again, or are we pulling ahead, or how are we doing?
Okay.
You had quoted some numbers, but the neighbor I know much lower than the state of Massachusetts, but I didn't quite catch them.
Okay. As far as the five-year trend is concerned, Foxborough showed an increase of six points, six percentage points over those five years. In Massachusetts, and I took from 2003 to 2007, current, in Massachusetts, there was a minus three, so it was more flat line. And nationally, it was minus five. In mathematics, the five-year trend, I think Foxborough's done very well, a plus 22 increase over that five-year time. Massachusetts was a zero increase, and nationally, it was a minus four over those five years.
Do they have a national number, as they do for the state number for the SAT, the 513, 522, and 511?
Yeah. The state was 513 for critical reading, 522 for mathematics, and 511 for writing.
Right. How about national?
National was 502 for critical reading, 515 for mathematics, and 494 for writing.
Wow. Thank you.
Okay. Katie, did you have any, anything you want to add?
No. Well, just a comment about the copy that we did.
The readability?
Exactly. It was, I don't know whether we can get another, whether it's possible to get it in.
It was really hard to read.
But I think it's valuable information in this profile.
I mean, it was very...
Is that, was that information taken from this report?
From a series of reports, definitely that was one of them.
Okay.
They've got to reprint from the source.
Thanks.
For an aging population.
It's so easy on the Bible.
Maturing.
Beth, did you have any comments, Beth? Any comments?
No.
Okay.
The only thing I'm always concerned about is the number of students taking them. It's a little upsetting when I see that our numbers go down as far as the percentage of the class that's taking them. And theoretically, if you have less students taking them, then hopefully your grades will be, your percentage points might be higher. But, you know, I look back down in 2001, 2002, we had over 90 percent of our class taking these SATs, and I just wondered why we keep going down and not up. And that bothers me. You know, back in 2000, we had 94.5 percent of our students taking SATs, and now we have 86.
She's reading that after this starts.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to find out.
Oh, sorry. I'm in the right column now. Thank you.
Do they not think they count? I'm a little bit...
I think there are two things that will help that. One is are students taking the PSATs scheduled into the school day? I think that's going to help enormously, because at least by then, then they'll have a score, and they'll know what the test is about, and then they'll be able to figure out through the review and other means. The other piece, I think, is something that we've talked just briefly about here, but is in part of our goal plan, and that we need to be able to predict much earlier in fifth grade and sixth grade even, when our students are going to, and how well, I bet we could predict how well they're going to do. And again, as I've said, you know, I've said to the number of parents groups that I've spoken to, and I'll be at the Ahrens School tomorrow and explaining this again, that it's important that we know and can predict, and then we can do something about those predictions. I think we can influence those predictions. We can say, at this point in time, if you've taken this level of math, and you've done this well on MCAS, we can pretty much predict what, unless we make some changes. And that's really what we need to do, is to be able to modify those programs and to say, you know, again, reach out to parents. I think it's a combination of things, what do their, what do the parents aspire their children to be. So I think there are a number of things that we need to build, and that's really why, you know, we're looking at the goals. But I think you're right. I mean, I think it's a 90-something percent we should be really looking at.
Well, it also bothers me that some of the colleges are saying that they're not going to rely on SATs or whatever, and I don't want that misnomer out there for every student. Because even though a college might not be looking at SATs the way they used to, or they're not going to look at them at all, you might have a student says, well, that's where I want to go, but what happens if they don't get in there? And they haven't taken SATs. And I mean, we need to, we need to explore all of that with these students, because I don't want them to be pulled up short because it didn't bother them.
And the other side of that is also not just looking at SATs, but the ACTs, and looking at that as a measure, and having kids have opportunities to take the ACT as well as the SAT. well as the SAT, because there are some that look more closely at SATs and some that don't. But you can predict what type of college you're interested in applying for, whether the college looks at SATs or not, based on what those scores are. It's still a standard, whether we like it or not, it's still a national standard. We know what those numbers look like.
Do we know how many, what are, more students are taking the ACTs, but do we keep any kind of statistics on? It's more of a requirement for Midwest, out West. So, we don't, we have some that may, but could that have influenced the drop in SATs, because they were told to go for the ACTs depending on where they geographically wanted to go?
I don't think so. Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but it's pretty low, the number of students that take ACT. To answer Martha's question, I think the biggest reason is there's a pool of students that know right off the bat, they're going to work, and they're going to, into the service. And I think that population has been a little bit larger, at least in the three years I've been here. And I think the other piece is when the students take the PSATs, that kind of frightens them, and they kind of get the sense that college isn't for me, you know, they just, they just don't. So I'd say we have a pool of 20, 25 students, somewhere in there, that just don't have plans to go to school, they want to go into the workforce, go into the service, whatever it may be. But I don't think you ever have to worry about any kids coming, falling short, because I think we do a good job being proactive to make sure that we encourage those students, if they have any thoughts at all, even very, very minimal thoughts about going to school, we're pretty good about being on top of that student, kind of reluctant students not sure what he wants or she wants to do.
And that's part of also revamping our guidance plan as well. Making sure that we have students, we identify them early, we make those connections between the middle school and the high school, and we look at group guidance and some of those things that students at that age look and see, well, one of my peers is going. I think now, I might be able to think about it even a little bit more. So some of it is really those kinds of connections that I think we want.
Or how do we support those students that take the PSATs and are frightened by it?
That's what I mean. That's exactly the piece, that's the guidance piece.
It's critical.
It is.
You know, but sometimes you come across a student who wants to go out to work, or wants to, you know, go in the service or whatever, that doesn't mean that college is totally off the radar, and I think we need to help prepare them. And there's a lot of kids that go out and understand that minimum wage isn't going to change unless they go back to school. So you do find that the kids eventually wind up going to a community college or whatever. So I think the guidance is a key component here, and trying to encourage these students, regardless of the score you might get, sometimes you even surprise yourself on a test. And I think we need to emphasize that even more, because, you know, it could be a good day for testing, who knows? And I wouldn't want to see a student not take them just because they're afraid of what they might get. It's their score, it's not going to be published all over the school, and I think they need to understand that, that this is for themselves, that they need to do this.
Jeff, on an unrelated subject, but while we have the nurses here as well, a few weeks ago, we had heard that the grant, we didn't get a grant this year for those students who wanted to do some nursing while in high school. Do you know where that stands, because I've asked if there was a funding issue, that they should come back to the committee and talk to us, because the committee's been very supportive of that program in helping students go through.
Nurses aid.
And I was told that we didn't get, the grant didn't come through this year, and
we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want those five or six students to fall through the cracks. And so I've asked them to come back, and I haven't heard. So if you just follow up, make sure that we provide, those that want to learn nursing aids, via nurses aid, we've been able to help them, and if the grant money's not available, it's only a few dollars, it's not very much, as a committee, I would hope that we would support that.
Absolutely.
Okay, you want to talk about advanced placement?
Sure. In 2007, we had 212, 212 administrations of advanced placement tests. I think the significant piece that I want to share is that, two years ago, we had 139, I don't want to say students, because it may not be 139 students, there might be multiple administrations, but 139 tests were administered, and again, this past year, 212, and currently we have about 235 students enrolled in our AP courses. So the numbers continue to move up, and I think that was one of the goals we set for ourselves a few years down the road, to increase student participation. The positive is that we've increased student participation, and we've also maintained the integrity of the numbers, if you will, as far as, you know, getting fours, three fours and fives, so the students have the ability to skip a course if they decide to in college when they get to that point. 76% of our students scored a three or above, and...
How much?
76%.
76, three or above?
Yeah, and of that 76, 46% of the students scored in the four or five category. Our leading subject areas were, and this gets me happy, I guess, calculus, English language, and English literature, our students on the whole scored four or better as, you know, as a group, which is very, very good, and that's a kind of a tribute to the teachers, certainly. In comparison, in 2006, 139 of our students took the test, as I mentioned, 77% scored three or better. So we've added about 77 tests, and we're just down one point, so I think that's pretty good. And in the four or better category in 2006, 50% of our students scored four or five, as opposed to 46 at this current administration. So again, you're talking, we're up 74 tests, we've introduced a new course in AP chemistry, so I think our indicators are strong. Also, this past year, all high schools in Massachusetts, all high schools nationally had to go through an AP audit. So what we had to do is tell the College Board what our courses consist of, the rigors of the course, and they ultimately came back and gave us approval or disapproval for the ability to use the AP designation. I guess what had happened nationally is some schools were saying courses were APs that weren't recognized by the advanced place, by the College Board, and also, courses had lost some of the rigor that was expected of the AP. So they did an audit nationwide, and all our AP courses met with, met the requirements of the College Board, which I think was a good thing. The two areas we're looking at where our scores aren't as high as we'd like them to be, but we think there's reasons for it, are biology and European history. And I think they're two of the most popular courses for kids who aren't sure that they, they want to take the AP, but they're not really sure what course they want to take. I mean, calculus is pretty specific, AP French, or AP Spanish is specific, so that we had lower scores than we would like to see in biology and European history. Now, that being said, the flip side of it is we also had a group of kids that might not have challenged themselves if we didn't give them the opportunity. So they may not have had as strong a writing skill as we would like, or some of the, really, I think, came out of the writing skills, that their writing skills aren't as strong. And what we did, as I mentioned last year, we checked their grade in the course and the AP score, because what we don't want to see is As in the class and ones or twos for AP scores, and that wasn't the case. I think if there was any kind of grade inflation, it might have been at the C-plus, C-minus area, or maybe it might have been, it might have been a little bit lower. Through the audit, I know our European history teacher is working much harder to improve the student writing skills, doing a lot more writing than they've done in the past. And in biology, there's a couple of practices, better pacing, so we cover more of the information equally, and more practice with multiple choice questions. And when I was talking to him today, he was saying that the other thing he's going to do less of is when he gives a test, he gives multiple questions that the students have access to, to prepare the questions for, so he's thinking about doing less of that, and having him come in and get the question, have to critically analyze the question, break it down as he would, as they would have to on the AP test, again, to foster more critical thinking skills. So I think there's some good thought processes to move that population along. But again, we also had the discussion about limiting who gets into the class and needing teacher recommendation, As and A pluses, and quite frankly, you know, that's not my style, that if a student wants to take a course, and there's a reasonable chance of success for the student, we're going to let them take the course if we have seats available. So if I come to you and say we have three AP courses, our scores may suffer a little bit, but I think the importance is we want to move all our kids in that direction to challenge themselves. So I'm comfortable, even though the score's a little bit lower, that the relationship works from the standpoint that students did not score that well in the classroom, they also didn't score that well on the AP test, but they challenged themselves, so to me, that's a good thing.
Absolutely. Katie, any questions?
Well, it's a balance. That is, the biology and the European history is a disappointment, because it's the, it's wonderful seeing numbers going up, because that's what we need to do. This is the first time, though, pretty much in the history where you've had that many students actually fail.
Two.
But you're saying, and thank you for conducting the analysis, you're certain it's the rating.
I think there's a combination. I don't think it comes down to one thing. I think there's a combination of four or five, four or five those factors that I talked about.
I'm glad the kids, students will challenge themselves. My concern here is this is the first group of students that have gone all the way through with our new curriculum, our writing curriculum. So, in other words, we're at a time where we're seeing our strongest writers are coming through the system, they're juniors and seniors. The good news is that the ones that are coming up behind those are going to be as strong. So, the writing component for an AP, that would be, that's set by the national standards, so I guess, or we passed what the, we met the requirements for our AP courses.
Right.
And that includes a large written component.
And all the written components in the different fields are different.
But they had no trouble in the others. That was just, that's just disappointing, but I thank you for the analysis, and I still think we need to get, we still don't have children taking and exposed to AP at the rate that our competitors do, and I think we need to continue to push and challenge our students. I personally think they need to get there before they're juniors and seniors, and hopefully we will get there.
Beth?
Good work. Thank you for this, it helps us understand and put it in perspective.
Katie?
Thank you, Jeff.
Martha?
Is there any way to get the information as to where we fell, you know, as far as, you know, what component were they missing?
Yes, we have information.
You know, if we do it in the MCAS, we can identify.
Yeah, not with that, not, more thematically, it's broken down, so there'd be six different areas, let's say, in the European history that we can look at and see how we're scoring, and go back to the drawing board and say, we need to spend more time on the open response, the multiple choice, or various timeframes.
But it did correlate, you said, to the grades?
Yes.
And those that had gotten, most of the students who failed were, had only attained a C or C-plus in the course.
I think it was, there was 33% of the students, I might have it wrong, but 33% of the students scored in the one and two category, and we looked at the grades, and it was 29% that had scored in the C category, C-minus, so it was pretty close.
No, but I'm saying, taking a look at the test and identifying which questions are, I mean, do we have the ability to do that?
They don't break it down that specifically. What we can look at is blocks of information, not necessarily like the MCAS, we can't go right down and look at all the questions and see the percentages.
Yeah, it's tremendous, because then you don't, I mean, when you have that many students that scored, you know, 17 scored in the two range, you'd like to know what those 17 were lacking per se.
Right.
You know, in what area, what didn't they get?
Right. And again, we can see the area, we just can't see the specific, the specific question.
You'd think you'd want to be able to realign what you were doing.
But it sounds like you have, it sounds like there has been a discussion about that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I...
It doesn't sound like the test itself gives you the answers or the direction.
It gives you a general area, content area, and then you go back and speak with the teachers to try to fill in whatever is missing.
Right, what thing, what broad things can we do to help with that particular subject area, that particular thematic period?
You know, 17 kids all got the same question on, then I'd say, okay, what was the wording? What, you know, pick it apart like we do with the MCAS, but apparently we don't have that ability.
Not to that, not to that level, no.
Okay, all right.
All right. Chris, did you want to add anything?
Great, thank you.
Jeff, again, thank you very much for coming with us, for coming this evening. All right, the next item on the agenda deals with goals, and to give some background for those at home, two weeks ago, we met as a committee in a workshop. We started by spending a good deal of time talking about goals for the school committee, and how we would hold ourselves accountable, and how the public should hold us accountable. Then we spent time discussing goals and objectives for the superintendent. And it was a facilitated dialogue, and the committee voted on a handful of key goals and objectives, and asked Chris and I to go back and do some work in the interim, to come back to you with some, we'll call it meat around the bones. And so you got a draft this afternoon, which is entitled, "Goals 2007, 2008," with a 3:30 PM on the bottom of the left. And what we tried to do is to take each of the major categories, if I take the first one as an example, build a comprehensive communication system that links all constituents. And we tried to add a number of subbullets with due dates, so that we could clearly articulate for Chris those issues that we thought we would want him to do, and the timeline, so that he would know how to measure, how we would measure him against that. Now, there are a couple of things that I wanted to start by saying. First of all, we focused in the last week on Chris's goals and objectives, so if the committee comes together in the next two weeks on these, we can then step back and do the same thing and finalize school committee goals and objectives, which will be aligned to Chris's. The intent wasn't to align everything tonight and rush through it. The second thing is that, as Chris and I talked through the goals and objectives, it was clear that we don't have a current effective job description for the superintendent. And so Chris put together this evening a sample job description, as well as the principles of effective administrative leadership, which the superintendent would normally be evaluated against. So, the intent wasn't tonight to talk about the instrument, or to talk about the job description, but what I would like to do, first of all, is I'd like to ask Katie if she would be willing to work with Chris on both the job descriptions and the tool, and present back to the committee in the next month or so, what the job description, so we can formally approve it, and what the tool would be that we would use as an evaluation. So, I know you've done some of that work in the past, and if you'd work with him on that, I think that'd be helpful.
Sure.
What I'd like to do tonight is I'd like to have a dialogue with the committee, and walk through the four subcategories that we, the four categories we have, and the subcategories in there, to see, did we capture what we talked about as a committee? Do you think that the due dates are reasonable? Are they actionable enough for you from that standpoint? As Chris and I talk through, I'll give you an example. If you drop to the full-day kindergarten, the discussion we had is that it's important to survey the community, to gain their input into the need for full-day kindergarten and the impact. We also need to evaluate the capacity and the impact on the classrooms, but while we're doing that, we don't want to miss a window for applying for a grant. And so while it may look funny that we're not going to survey the community until January, but we're going to do a grant request in November, what we're trying to do is to take advantage of everything that we can, so that if the community comes back, and the school committee comes back and says, we really want to do this, we don't want to say, well, okay, now that we've got your approval, we have to wait another whole year before we do a grant. So in some cases, while it may not seem as logical, we wanted to make sure that you understood why we had certain dates. In other particular cases, if you take a look at under communication, the last bullet, "Develop a media plan by January 1st to communicate with the community at large in a variety of media to better inform the community of our challenges and our successes." We wanted to emphasize challenges, because we want to be transparent to the community in where we're failing, or where we're not doing as well. We want to be clear about that. Once people know there's a problem, then we can rally around the support. But what we also talked about is, do we need to put something in there that specifically says, and P.S., make sure the school committee doesn't read it in the newspaper before they hear about it? You know, we want to make sure that the school committee knows about this stuff in advance. And so as we talked about it, we didn't want to get these that specific, but clearly, Chris understands the need for the school committee to be aware of things, for instance, the famous book covers that hit the newspaper. Chris was able to get us an email that talked about that. It's important to see that. On the other hand, we read in the newspaper that the MCAS scores aren't public, and yet there's an article about the MCAS scores and how we've done at the Ahern School, and yet the school committee hasn't received any information on that. So we want to make sure that there's an alignment, that the school committee's not surprised. So if you're at the grocery store and someone says, hey, can you give me something more about the Ahern, you say, what do you mean about the Ahern? I haven't seen that in the newspaper. So we tried to make sure that they were specific, but not so specific that they, that it kind of became ridiculous. So... specific that they, that it kind of became ridiculous. So, rather than go through each single bullet and read it and go through it, what I'd like to do is to ask you for your general comments. What did we maybe miss? Is it not specific enough? Are there other things that you think we need to have on there? What Chris and I try to do is capture all the dialogue. But if we've missed something, we want to hear that from you. And so, if you want, if we take the first one, which is communications, as you're reading through these bullets, do you have comments, criticism, ideas, suggestions that you think we could do anything differently under there? Can you just take a few minutes and kind of go through it? If you've got a question, you can ask your question while everyone else is, is still thinking through. But we want to try to move this forward if we could.
One of the, like you just mentioned about communication between the superintendent and the school committee. Where the bullet is building a comprehensive communication system. And I know you did reference the principles of effective leadership under accountability. But I wonder, I think that's an important piece. So, I guess I'm, the communication piece between us and Dr. Martis. So, that would, I'm assuming, be under communication system. But it's not there.
It, we discussed whether we would put it there specifically. I don't want to speak for Chris, but I think he felt it was, it was too specific and that he clearly understood the need for that and that that was not necessary to put in the goals because that was clear.
Let me speak to that. It's, it's actually a job description issue and not a goal issue.
Right.
Okay, right.
Now, if, if, if at the end of the year, for example, I haven't done that, that's when you build a goal. That's how, that's how I look at it.
So, let me ask you then, in that job description, is that what you're, what's being referenced as the principles of effective leadership?
Correct, yeah.
So, in essence, if somebody wants to know what it is that we expect from you regarding communication with us.
Right.
They can go to, well, I know this is just a...
The first one, informs and advises, under the job description.
Right.
informs and advises the school committee about the programs, practices, problems of the schools, and keeps the committee informed of the activities operating under its authority. That's communication.
Right. Okay. But that's what I mean. But this will be referenced. It doesn't have to be listed here in the goal, but this is...
Well, that's, that's why when we, when we
Under accountability.
talked about accountability.
Right.
That's only a tieback for the, for the compliance with the duties and responsibilities.
Okay.
I put both, as Larry and I were talking about this over the last week, we were talking about, and you can use either or both, actually. The job description is a specific one. This is the one that you have in your packet, is the updated one from Jim Hardy at MAS-C from our policy work.
Okay. I just want that to be clear for people out there because they may not understand why that's not listed.
And the tool that we should, that we'll use for the evaluation should tie all this together.
Right.
So, it clearly indicates the areas that Chris will be rated
Will be evaluated.
and whether it's 1 to 5 or
Okay.
whatever.
Right.
So, under, under the communication, comments, questions? Kate?
I think this is an excellent first pass. It was great to have the workshop. We flushed out numerous sheets of paper. We agreed it would be 6 to 7 as recorded, goals. It's recorded in our minutes. We're now down to 4. It's still a great rough pass, but I don't think it has the kind of polish on it yet that we would want. I think it's great that we're saying, number one, is a comprehensive communication system. But if, but that is not a goal. If we cannot say what we mean by that and what that's measured, and again, all the things that are under it, those are wonderful things. And those are tasks. And we agreed we would do that. But I think we need to be very, I think it's unfair to give this goal to Dr. Martis without being very clear in our minds what kind of communication system we want. And I don't think the tasks lead up to that. And it's not, in many ways, it's not specific or measurable. I don't find the goal specific or measurable. I think there are due dates which can be a form of measurement, but I don't find them flushed out. Do you want me to continue under communication?
Sure, go ahead.
You're still with communications. You know, we talk about, the whole purpose was to engage parents. And yet, that's, I think it might be mentioned in, under achievement. We want to engage them to get them knowledgeable in college. I would think that develop a network of parent leaders. I thought that is where the so what you ask yourself. Well, I think, isn't that what you, you're trying to engage parents? I just think we should be clear, if that's the goal or the task, we should call it what it is. And I, I think it's a great first pass, but I think it's very, very rough. And I just would like to see us clear on some of these categories. In student achievement and curriculum, it's so very, very important. And I find it lacking a lot of measurements. You know, what are the, what are the measurements we, you know, as measured by? How, how is it we want to find student achievement? We have a certain baseline. We've been talking about accountability for two years. And we say, we have a strategic plan that we want student achievement. Well, what is our baseline at student achievement? We define it as. And I don't think we've done that.
Well, we've defined it in the school improvement plans.
Then I think you need to say that. This is not, this to me is so, again, it's a great first pass, but it's very vanilla.
Right.
It's very, doesn't really say, I think, the emphasis that we, we want to put on those things. I think we need to flush those out.
Do you want to use some of the same language that's used in the district improvement plan, in the school improvement plans, to tie into these goals that we have here in terms of communication, in terms of student achievement? I mean, it...
How do we measure? We have a baseline of stu-, you know, a baseline student achievement as measured by these things. And we're, I mean, what's the sense of having innovative practice? The innovative practices are so that we move to a higher level of academic achievement. And we haven't really described what that level, what we stand for. And I would just, it's great what we have down as a first pass, but we need to nail that down. And I think...
It wasn't meant to be ready for approval tonight.
No, I'm not, and I'm not saying it is.
Right.
I just think, you know, Larry, you know how goals are. They're, they're specific, they're measurable, they're time-bound. I think we have bits and pieces, but they're not really measurable. And some may not be measurable because we decided to put tasks. And I have no problem with most, most of the tasks that are listed. But at least on the overall goal, we should be able to say how we define a communication system or what are our plans, you know, accountability. Again, I've heard this the last two years, but I'd like, this is, this is our place where we're going to define it. Accountability, so what? What do we mean by this? And have that, because these are just tasks under a very vague heading. And my only other point, what I would like to add is that we talked about technology. We talked about the importance of special ed. We talked about gifted and talented. Some of these, at least should be referenced under a task, under student achievement and/or that category. And I'm, I'm not sure that we've captured that in the texts that were written. And I think some of those things are so important, they should be captured.
Okay. Martha?
Sometimes if you make them too specific, you can't attain them. I mean, I already tried. And I think, considering the fact that this is our first attempt at this, I think they have to be a little bit broader. They can't be that specific. Because we, you know, you have to know where you've been, where you're going, and how you're going to get there. But I don't, I think if that's what you're looking for, Kate, then everybody ought to take this home and rethink it and bring it back. You know, after a while, it's almost like beating a dead horse. And they're just, you know...
I think, though, just, I think these topics are topics that we want to address. But take student achievement and curriculum. What is the goal? There should be, you know, we want to achieve, we want to have student achievement through the measurement of increased whatever. Or, I mean, I think that we, we want student achievement, but how are we defining that? And that might need to be more specific in the goal, or at least laid out in terms of our, you know, related to our core values, related to some of the language that we use in...
Yeah, but when you're talking about student goals and where you want to go, evaluate the effectiveness of the current comprehensive curriculum review cycle by January 1st and make recommendations prior to approval of the 2008, '09 budget. To me, that's not only a recommendation, but something for us to sink our teeth in and to know what we might need to change. I just don't, I don't understand what you're asking for, Kate.
I mean, the difficult part with the curriculum is, we, we looked at English and said it was pretty bad. Then we went to math, and we found out the books were last printed 10 years ago. And then we heard health tonight, and we heard how bad health was. So, what, when Chris and I talked, part of what, and I don't want to speak for Chris, but part of what he said is that, you know, being only a short time into the job, you have to give me a little bit of time to kind of assess
Right.
where we are. Now, recognize that in the district improvement plans, it clearly states for math and English what the scores are, where we want the scores to go, et cetera. But, but Chris has argued, and I tend to agree, that we've never had these publicly before. And so, what he has said is, you know, we don't have to go from 0 to 60 in three seconds here. And that what he'd like us to do is to try to come up with some strategies to, first of all, assess where we are with some goals clearly articulated, when I'm going to get you that information, how I'm going to evaluate some of that information, what recommendations I'm going to make. So, if you look at, for instance, you know, evaluate the current comprehensive curriculum, review class size. And what, what we talked about is, there's been lots of talk about the value of small class sizes. Some have said, well, maybe the small class sizes aren't where we ought to be spending our money. And what Chris has said is, before you set a goal to tell me what I ought to do, why don't you give me some time to research and bring back to you as a committee all of the current thinking on class size? What is Foxborough's current policies and procedures? And then let me make recommendations to you. Because in fact, that could have a significant impact on student achievement and curriculum. So, before you set a real specific goal around student achievement and curriculum, give me some time to be able to gather the data and be able to strategize with you as a committee and with the community, kind of where we want to go. Now, if the committee wants to be more specific right away, then one of the things that might be helpful is that if each committee member sits down with Chris over the next week or so, and then you're able to have your own dialogue about how specific or how general, what might be missing, what might, what might be there that needs to be changed, what might be missing, then we can come back in the October 15th meeting and present a more detailed approach, or at least a consensus. It's difficult, as we saw in the workshop, with everybody having different views, to kind of come to a consensus. So, this was an attempt to try to put as much of the consensus together. We anticipate each person having their own views. And Kate, you've got some wonderful ideas. And whether the committee will agree with them or not, you have an obligation to share those. And you have an obligation to, to sit down with Chris and to have that dialogue. And what I'm trying to do is make Chris an integral part of the process and not us saying, these are your goals, go and do them. And so, I've tried to listen to his thoughts and his feedback and the fact that he's fairly new in the job. But you didn't have all that advantage either. So, maybe over the next week or two, next week, if each member could sit down with Chris and review your thoughts and listen to his thoughts, what we could then do is have Chris submit to us for the October 15th, kind of an updated set that has had a chance to be vetted by everybody. And you've had, you know, a chance one-on-one to have that dialogue. And we'll take it from there.
I think what's important is they have to be mutual goals. They just can't, we can't be dictating that this is, we have to work together on this.
That's true.
And what can, we can achieve and what we can't achieve.
Let me reiterate a little bit of what Larry said because, as you can tell, your task for us was to get started on this
Which you did. Thank you.
from our workshop. And what I've found over the last few months is that we do have, and just to use, to use your word, Kate, we do have a lot of tasks that we have to accomplish in order to build the system. And without doing these tasks, we don't know where we could be with student achievement yet until we look at the curriculum cycle again and we get new leadership here to take a look at that, until we review our class size data, until we look at our capacity for other classroom space and accommodations and, and all of that. So, so as we were going through this and we were looking at all of the bullet points that, that we brainstormed with Glenn Kuchar about, we were really trying to put, okay, what are the tasks that we need to accomplish? And then Larry and I, over the last few days, have been going back on dates because at least there's something that's going to be measurable here that we're going to be able to say, we've accomplished this. We've accomplished this. And we've accomplished this. But you can't build, you can't say, we want all students to do this, until you have all the baseline. And we don't have all that baseline data yet.
Nor do you have what the root causes might be.
My words are, let's collect the baseline data. I don't see that here. So, I want to know, the goal, goals should be a blueprint for that. This is a great first pass. I think it's awesome. But it's not, I think it needs to be clearer. We have agreement around what the major categories are. And quite honestly, if you're going to link goals for the school committee, and that's our commitment and intention.
Yeah.
I don't want to say, yeah, I have a goal on accountability, but I can't articulate what it is. Or, yeah, I have a goal on student achievement, but I can't tell you is to, I would hope I would be able to say, I want to improve it. What is it about those? So, it's not much. I'm just saying, let's put the polish on it.
Very valid point.
Let's put the polish on it so that they're, so they hold up as a business goal anywhere in education, business, or any organization. And it's a great first pass. Please don't misunderstand the feedback.
No, no, I'm not at all. I think...
I think it's the articulation. I think we're all on the same page about what we want to accomplish. It's just how we're articulating that. And I think it's, and we want to be very clear when, when a parent picks this up too and sees what it is that, that we're hoping to accomplish. So, I think we're all...
Let me just speak to one other point because I think it's important. What, I think, if I recall a meeting two weeks ago, we had gotten this down to five areas. And then, as I was working with Debbie Spinelli, she felt that both, we had a separate area of curriculum, a separate area of student achievement, and that she felt that student achievement and curriculum were tied together. And that, why don't we at least, at least look at it in the first pass as that? If we want to split it back out, we certainly can split it back out. And I think everyone is open to that. But we thought it was, at least in, in looking at some of the important bullet points in this, to be able, to be able to build this, to figure out where, where we're going to go, I think, I think that was at least the first part.
I mean, the important part from my perspective is that, number one, Chris has had a chance in a three or four hour session that we did two weeks ago, to hear from every school committee member on what they thought the issues were, whether it be tasks or issues or strategies or goals or objectives. But he really got to hear that. We have now taken and tried to connect some of those dots on the piece of paper here. And now, with each person sitting down individually, I'm not hung up that this isn't done tonight, or it wasn't done by 9:30, because the key is, it's, we've never done it before. And better that it be done right than to be thrown together. And so, Kate has valid, valid points. You all have valid points. This was meant to be a first start.
And it's a good one.
And I'd like you to, you know, I'd like each person to go through it. I'd like you to set up a meeting with Chris, talk through, and then let's come back at the October 15th meeting and talk about it some more. And if it takes another meeting after that to get it with, to the point where we can truly articulate it, each of us, and we're satisfied. Because once we get these done, the school committee goals and objectives will tie right back because obviously, we're all going to be going in the same direction. So, it's important to get this first. And the reason why I want to do this one first is so there's no doubt in Chris's mind where we're all trying to get him to go. Because our evaluations come once every three years. His evaluation comes every year. And so, it's important for him, as he's already a couple of months into it, knows clearly what the, the school committee is going to hold him accountable for. And so, while we're doing that, I think it is important to come up with a tool. We've seen what he used in framing him. We've seen what we had here before. And I think that Katie can work on that independently. And again, it won't be just, this is what Katie wants. We'll come back. We'll discuss it as a committee. We'll come to an agreement. And then, and then we'll have that in a way that will allow Chris to be evaluated. I hope, though, Katie, that maybe what you'll, we could try something a little different as well. And that maybe you could create an instrument for the school committee to self-assess itself. So, that maybe in the spring, the school committee can do its, all, each member can evaluate how you think we did in these key areas. And we can have kind of a dialogue. And we can give a report card to the community on how collectively we think we did as a, as a community. And then we share, Chris is evaluating, how we think he did. And the community sees some things that they've not seen before. And I think that'll be helpful.
The other thing is, I don't know if, on the MAS-C, is there something about evaluations? I know last year there was, you know, if Katie's going...
Oh, at the conference.
At the conference.
Well, I'll find out tomorrow. I'm on a plane to kind of, a plane committee meeting tomorrow morning.
Because if there was, you know, you can hold off a little bit and go to that because Katie, that was very, that was very informative.
I'll see Glenn and Jennifer Handy tomorrow.
There was a lot of handouts. It was a great discussion.
Actually, that's a good point.
So, I bet you anything, I think she should go to that first before she sits with you.
I'll get the...
Because that was very informative.
That's a good, that's a good session.
That is a good idea.
Yeah, it's excellent, really.
So, I guess I would ask at this point, if there are any kind of outrageous kinds of comments you have. I don't mean that in a negative sense.
No.
But that, that you think are just real glaring things that are missing. Otherwise, you know, with no sense, getting into a working session this evening, we'll just have you work individually and then come back?
Just some language, you know, like under the student achievement and curriculum guidance. Even though I know it's, it's, you know, we talk about research about college acceptances, admissions. But I would, I don't think the actual word... admissions, but I would, I don't think the actual word is used, guidance, and it would be nice to identify that as, that's a goal, that, you know, or that's a, that's an assessment that has to be done about what needs to happen in the guidance.
Right.
Under student achievement and curriculum? Yes.
The second bullet to the bottom, I think Katie was saying, research data about college acceptance, admissions situation.
Right, and I like that, and I think that's great, but again, I think...
Tie it into guidance.
We have to identify the guidance is, you know...
And see, again, if you look at the third bullet underneath there, Chris and I had a discussion around, you know, assess staffing at all levels before the budget. If you recall, we had Jan last year take a look at every position, and she, because we didn't have everything we wanted to do, she said, these positions are more important than these, and I recommend the change. Again, since Chris has only been here a short time, we don't have a base for that, and if we, even though we have a base, it was Jan's assessment, not Chris's assessment. And so he needs to go back through all those positions. And so, again, the goals should be, I think, better in oh-eight, oh-nine than the R in oh-seven, oh-eight, because we'll use this to kind of really come up with a base. Because at the end of the day, you know, Chris is under a three-year contract, so it'll be his assessment in year two and three, based on his strategy, his goals, his recommendations to us. Where right now, he's still kind of in charge of implementing programs that other people started. And that's why it's important for him to look at the math specialist positions, look at the curriculum that was being proposed, look at the kinds of positions we have across the district, look at where we are in guidance, and where we are in some of these other areas, and make those recommendations.
And just to add on to that a little bit, if this makes the committee feel a little more comfortable, having been a superintendent in a couple of other districts, this is actually a good starting point for this, because I would envision that we'll be doing some of this work next summer, because we'll be evaluating in May and June, and then building the next set of goals right away. So this activity, the brainstorming piece two weeks ago and all of that, that's pretty much how this work happens in good school districts.
I think the dates are very ambitious. January first, March thirty-first. I mean, I was really happy to see that. I hope it's not too ambitious.
Well, I mean, as with any goal, at least in my experience, there are some reasons that you don't hit them. But if you don't put a target out there, you're not going to know whether you can or not. So there are times when you have good reason, because something else comes up that's more of a priority, and that can happen.
But this is a work in progress. I mean, if there was a realistic reason why something cannot be achieved...
Of course, of course.
Exactly. But I say, you know, Larry and I worked a lot the last few days about, let's, you know, let's be more ambitious about this than less, and see if we can get these things up and running.
Because keep in mind, some of these, I mean, it's the flow-down theory. So Chris has to flow some of these down to other folks, and we want to try to keep, you know, tight deadlines on everybody. And not because we want to be tough about it, but to be very candid, there's lots that has to be done in this school district. There's lots of time that has to be made up. And every day that goes by, with the health curriculum, or the old math program, or whatever, the students are impacted. And so Chris said to me, I need to make these aggressive, because we owe it to the students. And he asked me, he said, so, but if I miss one or two by a day, or I miss one by a month because of other things, are you going to hang me out to dry? And I said, absolutely not, that's not what we do.
Kate, we have too many tasks.
Yeah, believe me, you will talk to us. You will be our hero.
So I was impressed with his level of ambition, because he sees the passion at this committee about moving the school district in a positive direction, and there's lots that has to be done. And his assistant superintendent doesn't start for another month. And so, you know...
By phone, I have to admit. By phone, it's just started.
Right.
Larry, one other point that I think we might have discussed at the last meeting, which of course was not telecast, and when you talk about reviewing all of the staff positions, those new staff positions that are on board this year, the math specialists, the preschool, early childhood coordinator positions, those cannot really be assessed at this point in time, they're too new, and it will take time. So I think that parents and citizens at home need to understand that those positions need to be in place for a while, at least, what you said, two years, before we really can determine the effectiveness of them. So just something to keep in mind, if people are wondering, well, why wasn't that position a target, or, you know, looked at?
We'll have a good assessment at the end of this school year, or certainly by the spring, and really be able to build it either in or out of the budget for, budget two thousand ten.
Right. Yeah, we're all getting it.
No.
How about it after?
Oh, nine, two thousand and ten.
Okay. Well, I think we've taken a big step forward, we've got some more work to do on this, and we'll continue to do that on the goals. If we could move to other matters, I'd like to start with Chris first.
Sure. One quick one, some of you may have heard this, and we just found out, because the Taylor School playground is up and ready, there's a dedication Wednesday at five-thirty at the Taylor School, official opening of the playground, that this committee generously supported. We just picked this up today, so I want to make sure you received that.
On that note, Beverly, I'm going to be in Denver, would you represent me at the celebration?
I will do that.
And give my best to all the parents?
I certainly will do that.
Thank you.
Two other areas, one is just a quick update around security. The Metrolec people, both our, two members of our police department and the Metrolec people are continuing to analyze, hoping at the October fifteenth meeting, we have a more complete update on where we are. And I know that they're looking at all of our systems here at the high school, and they've already been, I talked to Sue Abrams the other day, they've already been at the Ahern School and met with her. And they're looking at all of our design and our plans, and right down to our doors, and where everything is, so that they can then do a complete analysis of each area of our schools. So as we said, we're starting with, deal with the high school and the Ahern School, and then looking at other schools. So I think we're in good shape. And again, I always have to preface this by saying, we have good safety plans, but we can talk about it in...
Yeah, I can, I'll bring that up, yeah.
We have good safety plans, was articulated in our EQA report at the school level, and we're building the district one. So, and Metrolec has been very helpful along, as I have, again, I have to commend Chief O'Leary, who's been gorgeous, wonderful in this whole process. And the other one is policy, where, Paul, you've been communicating with Jim Hardy from MASC on our policy update. He's given us a list that we're looking at now, I think we're going to have to schedule a meeting soon, in order to...
For the, for the extra meeting for the policy?
I think we'll need an extra meeting on that. I don't think we're going to have time to weave it into another...
No.
Okay.
I think we had said, before, I do them separately, one or two more, before we do our first and second meetings.
Good.
Anything else?
All right, a couple of items. Number one, Chris and I went into Boston today to the EQA meeting, and the EQA board was wonderful to deal with. They, first of all, they acknowledged that the reason for doing the audit here in Foxborough was that they got a citizen's petition, raising questions and concerns about how the schools were run, and that they think that's a great model, that citizens that are concerned can raise that. And the executive director told his board that he would like to see that as a model used in other communities, where people that are concerned are able to raise that, and some portion of their audits are done that way, as opposed to how they do their audits. I think that, as I understand it, Chris and I were the lone school that brought both a school committee member and the superintendent, more often than not, the superintendent went. We had an opportunity to talk to them at length about the report itself. I gave them a statement, or read them a statement, that I would be happy to share with the committee, indicated to them who I was, that I was elected to the school committee in May of oh-six, and been the chair since May of oh-seven, that as a chief audit executive for Raytheon, I can appreciate how hard the team worked to do the job, including drafting the final report. And as you recall, the draft went from a hundred and thirty pages down to about twenty, so lots of work goes into editing something like that. I told them the report was well-received by the current school committee, and we've discussed it at two public meetings, which is probably what led to the letter from the public watch group, FEO. I will say that they did accept the report, or they approved the report as-is, without adopting any changes, so that the questions, the issues that were raised by FEO were not, did not change the report at all. I told them that the FEO comments were mostly positive about the results and the work that they had done, but they did provide some questions for clarification. I told them the school committee accepts their criticism of poor leadership and governance from the superintendent and the school committee. The prior chair for nine years, including those years under audit, did not stand for reelection in May of two thousand and six. Our committee is different today than the committee that was during the period under audit. In the spring, Martha took over as the chair, and we pressed the superintendent on many issues that were subsequently identified by them as well. Their assessment reinforced our decision to accept the resignation of the superintendent. Once the superintendent left, we immediately set forth as a committee to address the weaknesses within our district, and we've continued that path since their team has finished and left. We have made great progress as a school committee, and they were kind enough to mention some of those in their report. And to provide an update to that committee, I told them in the last thirteen months, we've approved a strategic plan, comprehensive individual school and district improvement plans that are quantifiable and measurable, and we've been addressing the safety plans. We've implemented a new budget process last fall, so every school could present their own budget requests, develop monthly budget reports to better manage potential surpluses, and use those funds earlier in the year, rather than in June, which was the previous custom. We've approved a formal curriculum cycle, we funded a new ELA program, new math programs, and we're working on others. The old math program that they criticized was using textbooks that were auto-printed over ten years ago. We now have a new curriculum, and we've added new math specialists to help us introduce the program. I told them that we've added back library and guidance positions previously cut, as well as the new math specialists, that we've updated all the school committee policies, although we haven't approved them, we've updated them all, and that morale in the school system has skyrocketed. We are confident that under Dr. Martis's leadership, all items will be closed by June of two thousand and eight, and we invited them back to re-audit us after June. I think we're the first community to ever invite them back to re-audit. On behalf of the Foxborough School Committee, I thank you for a job well done. I only wish the audit had been done many years earlier, so our community could have addressed the issue sooner, and our students and teachers would have been the beneficiaries. That said, this school committee understands it's our responsibility to establish high standards, hold both the superintendent and ourselves to those standards, not you, the EQA board. They were extremely, I think, my view, and Chris Kinshire's own, and Ms. Nevada was in the audience, I think they were overwhelmed by the amount of progress this committee has made in the last thirteen months, and they were convinced how serious this committee has been about focusing on these issues. They said that after the report was approved, that we'll get a transmittal letter with the report, and that transmittal letter will acknowledge the substantial progress that the community has seen in the last thirteen months, under this school committee's leadership. Chris, did you want to add anything else?
I think you've covered a lot of it. I would absolutely agree that the end of the discussion was very, very positive, and I'll also reiterate that I think EQA, or whatever it ends up becoming, will take this kind of model, because I think it is a good model. And I think it's, I think it's developed into a better model over the last couple of years, and there's a new board that asks tough questions, but I think was very appreciative of the work that has taken place already, and depending on what the next phase looks like, I think they would come back, and it would be, it would be very good for them to be able to see the progress that's been made.
It's important.
It is. And, you know, I wanted them to know that we appreciated the work that they did, and while, you know, sometimes they provide negative information, that's how we act upon it. And I think they were pleased. In the past, I understand there were lots of finger pointing and lots of lecturing to the communities, there was none of that at all. It was a good, constructive dialogue. One of the comments that they made is, they said that obviously, in the last thirteen months, this school committee's been pretty active in driving change. Now that we have Chris on board, is the committee comfortable with stepping back and letting him run the school district? And I said, absolutely, we're all very pleased with Chris and the team he's putting together, and very comfortable with him driving the rest of the changes that need to be made. But that in fact, I tried to give them examples of how we've been supportive in providing the funding for the new programs, the funding for buying additional computers, adding back the new positions. And the committees tried to provide strategic direction, support around the strategic plan, you know, as a community-wide plan, it wasn't just the school committee. So we talked about the year and a half process that went around it, we talked about insisting on school improvement plans that were measurable and quantifiable, we talked about using the revolving funds in ways that they weren't used before. So I tried to emphasize, we weren't involved in the day-to-day running of the school, we weren't involved in the day-to-day hiring, or any of that kind of stuff, we were involved in driving strategy, which I think is appropriate. And we have someone like Chris who can help us strategize, but more importantly, will take and execute what we need to have executed. So I thought it was very, very positive, and we were in and out of there in the time that was allotted to us. A couple of other quick things. I did, you all received a copy of a letter I sent to the board of Selectmen, the chairman in particular. Budget season is going to be upon us soon, there is additional revenue obviously coming in because of Patriots Place. It is clear to me that the seventy-thirty historical split we've had isn't going to necessarily apply to the additional money from Patriots Place, because Patriots Place is going to have a need in the police department, and the fire department, and some other municipal areas. And so I thought it was important that we sit down early on and talk through what's going to be our strategy. And when that meeting is scheduled, I'd like to ask Beverly to join me on that, and we'll talk to the Selectmen, the town manager, the finance director, et cetera, and then we'll bring back to you folks what they're proposing as a strategy for this year, so that as Paul and Chris are starting to work through that, we're all on the same page. We got a letter this evening from the FEA president, asking us to begin negotiations on their new contract. They would like to see negotiations begin in December of two thousand and seven, with an expectation that the contract be ratified before the end of school in two thousand and eight. And I'd like to ask Martha if she would work with me on the negotiations in that respect. Two other quick things, in this, we got this two thousand and seven delegate manual for the MASC, Mass Joint Conference, and I noticed in here that they have some lifetime members, current Mass life members. And I noticed that there was only one person in here from Foxborough, and it happened to be Paul Carroll. And I guess I'd like some understanding, how do you become a life member? Because, you know, we might want to give some thought to, who do we think on our committee, current or in the future, should be nominated as a life member, and what does that mean? So if someone could enlighten me, I'd appreciate that. Chris?
I can find that out, again, I'm in a planning meeting for that conference tomorrow morning, so I can find out what, yeah.
And would you readdress that?
Pardon me?
Should we readdress that later, or?
You should, well, actually, you know...
For this year, you'd have to, you'd have to put it in.
I think you do, but some of the resolutions, we may want to discuss before, obviously, the meeting is November fourteenth.
That's one of the things I want to bring up.
So one of the, I've typically, and I don't know how this board has handled it, but I've typically had that as an agenda item, probably the first meeting in November, so that you can spend a little time reading about the resolutions, and then...
I'm just curious as to why, Paul, we've had, Vinnie Igoe, for instance, you know, was on the committee for forty years, and I didn't see his name on there now, maybe because Vinnie's passed on, they come off, I don't know.
He was on it before, because I know when I first got on here, he was put in for something and was recognized, maybe. It was probably my first year on the committee, because I went to the full meeting, so he...
But I don't know whether, you know, there's three terms, there's four terms, there's five terms, there's one term, I don't know what qualifies.
If the committee or the superintendent feels strongly about a person on the committee, then you put that name in for consideration.
I think that's...
You write something about it, and that's how it goes.
Okay. The last item I had, Chris, just would like you to comment on, I read in the newspaper that Kevin Murphy has received an award, he's received recognition from the state, but I also read that he's retiring the end of the school year. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. He, last Friday, at a conference that the MIAA, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association sponsors... Association sponsors, Kevin was given the Wellness Coordinator of the Year Award. As we do our recognitions, I'll invite Kevin to a future meeting, maybe even the next meeting, and recognize him. I sent him a note and wished him well. I was at the Pace and Road Field Dedication, and not there, but I know that Jeff and Craig Nigery, and our new athletic director, and I think, I think our assistant principals may have attended that as well, were there to offer our Foxborough support to Kevin. And he has, I don't know if he's announced specifically to, although he did make a note in the paper, we don't have any official document, but he did, he's already talked to me about it. I actually connected him with someone over at the retirement board to make sure he was also, so.
Okay.
But we'll recognize him at a future meeting.
Please, because he's had a long, successful career here in Foxborough.
He's got a long track record here.
Absolutely has. He absolutely has.
Beverly, would you...
Remember, it's not over. And when he goes to the board, he may find we've had others here that have decided to stay one more year.
Right, right, right. Well, that's why, that's right.
I know you'll swoon.
I know.
Never say no.
Never say, never say no.
Right, that's right.
Bev, would you like to go next? Any other matters?
Well, actually, I would like to bring up for consideration and actually nominate Martha Slattery to be put on the board next year for the lifetime school committee member. She's been 10 years on the board, and without her stability qualities, and without her excellent leadership, we could not possibly have begun to accomplish what we have done in the past 13 months. She certainly was the lone catalyst of the substantial progress that has been happening during the past three months, her driving strategies. I'll tell you, if I ever read any more policies after this, I don't know. But I really would like to, us to nominate Martha Slattery for next year's slate, to be brought forward for next year's 2008 Massachusetts Association of School Committees invention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second to that? What I'd like to ask, certainly the pleasure of the committee, that we hold off until we get the criteria, and that we then...
And I also, I'd need to know, yes...
Could be a twofer. There are a lot of things that Martha's qualified for. We could have her, she could also get a plaque and an option. So, we know the criteria.
So, if Chris would get us that in the next couple of weeks, then let's then make a formal...
And I also, I would need to know the formality, or we as a committee need to know, the formality of what kind of letter writing?
I'll find out.
Do you do it? Does the committee do it? How that...
I think it's been a combination in the past.
It has been a combination.
We can actually then have the teachers assess how well the writing is, and whether or not we're as good as the students.
Dr. Martis gets to write.
That's past the buck.
You have me writing about nurses.
Right. Anything else, Ms. Lloyd?
That is all for this evening.
Ms. Slattery?
Two things. I know we have our delegate session coming up with MASC, and I know in the past, Bev has been fortunate enough to be our delegate, but the main thing is for us to all take a look at the policies and what they're trying to bring forward, and make sure that we tell Beverly that we would like her to represent us and to vote for these things, because some of them are very important to all of us. The other thing is, we were given these in our packet, these grade one through grade eight curriculum benchmarks, and I, this is such a tremendous way for us to sell ourselves, and I wondered if it's at all possible for us to put some sort of a display like this in the library, because we have a lot of young parents who are trying to consider charter school, private school, public school, and I think this is a real eye-opener, when you read this, as to what our expectations are, and what we offer here at the Foxborough Public School System. I think we have to be more proactive, we have to sell ourselves better. So, I think wherever it's appropriate, these should be put out, so that young parents have access to them, so they know what a tremendous system, and what we offer here, and what we expect of our students. So, it's a great way of selling ourselves.
Absolutely.
I think the library is a great place to spark, if there are laws...
Was this printed in-house?
No.
No. It's an excellent job. Whoever put that together, I would like them to receive it.
It is on the web, too?
Paul, a question for you.
Just for people to pick up.
These were distributed at the, I know at the middle school during open house.
No, but there are many...
See these back in January with the EQA...
No, I'm sure, but for young parents, or people moving in too fast.
I think you're absolutely right.
You know who else should have these? Every Realtor in town should have a copy of all of these to sell, as a selling product for our school.
And I'll bet you they'd even buy them from us.
Yeah.
For a nominal fee.
This would be, this would be a tremendous...
That's a great idea, Martha.
Come on, for people to have the Realtors have these accessible to them.
Paul can set up a revenue account. But Paul, the question I had for you is, when we met with the New England Patriots, Martha and I, they talked about their capabilities, and that they have a publication house in-house. And I was just wondering, when we have things like this printed, have we ever considered going to the Patriots and asking them about their printing capability, and whether or not, A, if their price is competitive, and we had to pay for it, why not give it to someone who's been kind to the schools and given to the schools? Or number two, by going and asking them, they may print some of this stuff at a reduced rate, or at a free rate, as a charitable contribution to the schools?
Well, until we met with them, Larry, we didn't know a lot of the things that were available, or what they might be willing to do for us. And it's part of our ongoing working relationship with anybody in town, and they were very, very...
Very gracious.
Very gracious.
They just had a bunch of students up there.
It's like, tell us what, yeah, I saw that, you know? So, it's a better working partnership than we ever had.
So, can we just kind of put that on our working list to reach out to them, and maybe give them some of the printing, and maybe get some for nothing? Kate?
Yeah.
Kate?
Just to follow up, I also, Martha, I wanted to, but it's not just the brochure. I really think the recognition to Dr. Alardi, to our curriculum directors, it wasn't just for EQA. They did this, and they rolled it out, one through four, and now we have finished product one through eight, and I hope we're going to get nine through 12 installment, but they worked very, very hard. They believe that as they were doing the strategic plan, and school improvement plans were being worked on by our school councils, that this was something that was very, very helpful. And when we got our copies, I think in February, we were told we couldn't show them. What a wonderful finished product. Very well done. So, thank you, Dr. Alardi, and our curriculum team. They did a phenomenal job.
You read it, you want your child to go ahead. Absolutely.
But the effectiveness into our library...
It's part of our communication system.
Because of all the story hours, everything.
They're all, the young parents are there. So, you're all set up. We should have something for kindergarten.
I'd also like to...
We'll have them in pre-K and kindergarten. We'll have to build a double kindergarten.
Go ahead, Kate.
If we could, I'd also like to, just as a reminder, the alcohol and drug, the Partnership for Drug-Free Foxborough, the community group, will be meeting this Thursday, October the 4th, at 7:00 PM at the Media Center. They'll be finalizing the vision and mission statement, and doing some other work with some key goals that they've set for this year. So, any interested parent, community member, we'd love to have, the group would love to have people show up.
Kate, I'll be out of town, so if you'd convey my absence to the folks. There was also a question about whether or not there might be some funding necessary.
They're going to come before you, as I understand, on the 15th? I think that'd be great, the partnership can show...
Come before the school committee?
Yes.
Yes.
So, they can highlight what they're doing.
Yes.
I felt it was very important to have, the forum that the school committee and the Selectmen put on, was really very, I think, a great catalyst and a great start, and if they can only do a couple of things, it was vital to get a teen activity, and vital to continue that training for parents. And it looks like that could be done November 14th, but the group would like to come before you on October 15th, and just review that.
And we're going to put that on the agenda.
And just quickly, Kate, just to follow up on that, Marilyn Belmonte and I are emailing back and forth on the staff training, to try to figure out how that fits into our whole plan, but we'd love to have her come and follow up. It would be obviously after the parent piece, but we're looking at that, and I want to bring Debbie Spinelli into that conversation. I told you that today in an email.
Okay. Anything else? Martha, you had something else?
Just one other issue, when that MASC bulletin just came out over the weekend, they talk about cities in town urge to join the health plan, and that they can, there's a possibility of a $100 million saving on rapidly spiraling health costs if we get into the Municipal Group Insurance Act, which is through the state, and I just wondered if, Paul, we, as a school, or as a town, don't be looking into this to try to get a better rate on insurance, is there?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to Andy.
Okay. You want this, I'm through with it.
Yes, please.
Okay. Because that, it's impressive, and it's a good possibility, and I think it's something that I'll need to take a look at.
Well, it's certainly been a budget buster the last few years.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So, if we could rein in those costs, that would be helpful.
Yeah, on both sides, so.
Health insurance is up 18 percent.
Again?
Easily.
So, we saw a rate increase of 18 percent.
All right. Mr. Jackson, did you have anything you wanted?
Just inform the board that today, the entire business office staff, Pam McCauley and I, attended a kickoff meeting at the town hall, and today was the official beginning of the Munis Accounting Project, so for the municipal finance project. Munis was selected, and today was the first meeting. We had a work session this afternoon, so we have started with the expectation of a go-live date for the general ledger, as well as accounts payable, January 1.
Wow. That doesn't take much time.
No, it's aggressive, and we'll have to develop an entire chart of accounts, which will be totally new, quite different than anything we have at the school, and the town will have to also develop a chart of accounts. Along with that, they'll be, in the not-too-distant future, within the next few weeks, they'll start to string, I believe, fiber between the Igo and the town hall initially, and then to proceed with all the buildings, which will be an important aspect, we'll need the bandwidth to roll out this project, which we'll be able to piggyback on with our power school, which will, all of the aspects of that fiber backbone will be a huge benefit to the school department.
Absolutely.
I would be true qualm like that great little guy. Those are my favorite ads. Take that little boy home. Those are my favorite ads.
Anything else from anyone on the committee? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Martha, seconded by Beverly. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries 5-0. Meeting's adjourned at 9:22.